And we'll start with the Fudge of Allegiance case.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no public party scheduled this evening, but we do have two presentations. And the first one is with Lincoln Health, and I'd like to welcome Jim Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For our selectmen, it's my pleasure to be here this evening. So it was about a year ago that I was here making the rounds of all the select boards in Lincoln County. That was our, the first time we had done that on an organized basis. The purpose was really just to provide some quick updates about what's happening within Lincoln Health and answer any questions that the select board or members of the community may have. So it's been fun going around and visiting with folks. The new thing that I'd like to talk about tonight is programs and services that have changed since I was here last, but I'm going to set the stage a bit. As I think you all know, Lincoln Health is the largest employer in Lincoln County. We employ about 1,000 people. And we have campuses in Boothby Harbor and Damascata, and of course, we have practices in Walderboro, West Cassett, and Damascata and Boothby Harbor as well. Last year, we treated over 20,000 residents of Lincoln County. And that those aren't a single, or those are probably some people more than once. They're not individuals necessarily. We are a not-for-profit organization. And last year when I was standing here also, I talked about the process that we've been going through at our system level to prepare ourselves for the future. And legally, what that looked like was a merger of eight hospital systems from Biddeford to Belfast that were part of the main health system. We merged those eight hospital systems into one corporation. We did that for reasons of financial flexibility going forward in dealing with federal government and state government, you know, payers, et cetera. And we did it to strengthen ourselves as an employer. I mentioned Lincoln Health employs 1,000 employees. Main Health employs about 19,500 employees. By far, the largest employer in the state is Main Health. We did, the merger was effective January 1st of last year. So really, all of 2019 was our getting used to our new structure from an operational standpoint. Figuring out what changed, what hasn't changed, what opportunities present themselves to us. One of them, I think, is, as your town manager knows, is our working with a planning committee to talk about the future of the delivery of healthcare services in Walderboro through the two practices that are presently in your town. The Lincoln Medical Partners Practice and the Community, I'm sorry, Coastal Healthcare Alliance Practice, both of which have been in your town for a long time. And we want to make sure they're here for a long time to come. So we're trying to figure out the future of those practices. And that's an awful big part of our planning as we think about their immediate future. One of the, when we, when we as a healthcare system think of what's important to us, nothing is more important to us than the quality of care we provide to all of our, all of our patients, all of the residents of our senior living facilities as well. And we have been awarded on a number of occasions over the past years, national awards of which we're proud, but we're only proud of the awards because of what they mean. They mean we're doing a very good job in taking care of patients as well as anybody in the country. And that includes not only our hospital services, but also the services of our nursing homes. I know what I'm, I know what, on the next page, I just want to make sure I don't miss anything. If I could turn the page, it would be good, here it is. So one of the things we were really excited about talking about last year when I was here, we were relatively new in occupying our new building on the Myles campus called the Watson Health Center. I will remind you that what we were able to do is take all the practices, which encompass about 26 or 28 physicians, and then many nurses and medical assistants and support staff, able to bring them from four buildings on the Myles campus, only one of which was built to be a medical office building, and that was in 1980. Things have changed since then, I assure you. Bring them into one modern building, not only to provide them the ability to have more space, practice medicine in a team, a more team environment, but we also built the building so we could bring into Damascata specialty services, subspecialty services that we were not, have not been able to do before because of physical plant limitations. So over the course of this last year, as we've kind of eased into our new building, we've increased several specialty services that we're very excited about and very excited about going forward. Cardiology is probably the most heavily utilized service, subspecialty service on our campus. And frankly, it is across the entire main health system, the full range of cardiac and cardiovascular services. We've doubled the cardiologist's time on our campus, and we've also are in the process of adding full-time cardiac specialists and advanced practice providers. Those are nurse practitioners and/or physician's assistants. We're great, and that's going very well. That's in partnership with the cardiology group that is part of Main Medical Partners, which is the large practice in Portland, and they have cardiologists spread all over the state. Ear, nose, and throat services, we've doubled the time. We have ear, nose, and throat specialists on campus, mostly applicable to kids. And very important, and they are now taking care of kids in our, in our office as well as in our operating room when those services are needed. One we're particularly proud of, and it's just getting up and running as we talk here today, is oncology. Medical oncology. We have not had a medical oncology, a medical oncology presence on a regular basis on the Myles campus in the past, and now we do. Starting just about a month ago, Dr. Keith Mills joined us. He will be practicing on, in our building one day a week. And we have hired a woman named Monica Buckley, who is a oncology specialist physician assistant. And she's with us full-time, five days a week. They are working with us to establish the oncology service and also working with us over the next couple of months to get up and running a chemotherapy service. One of the things we say about patients that we take care of is we want to take care of Lincoln County residents in Lincoln County when it's clinically appropriate. Obviously, sometimes it's not. Oncology is definitely clinically appropriate, and it has not been available in Lincoln County. There was some short-term services offered in Boothby Harbor about 10 years ago, but due to volume issues, they went away. But we're bringing them back. We've had major renovations just completed to our pharmacy, which is required to obviously take care of mixing and preparation of chemotherapeutic agents. And we're in the process of renovating space for the stretchers for patients and chaise lounges for patients. We're expecting to be up and running in April. We're very, we're very proud of this. And this, the unfortunate reality is a lot of people need chemotherapy. The, what we can do about that is not have them have to travel to Brunswick, Scarborough, or Portland three, four, five, six times a week, which is often what these services require. They can get their services close to home. So you'll be hearing more about that once we get Dr. Mills more settled. You'll see his picture in the paper and hear more about him. He's a very experienced medical oncologist, and we're lucky to have him and Monica equally as experienced. The last one I want to mention is ophthalmology. So many of you know that in Newcastle, for many, many years, Dr. Roy Seibel practiced ophthalmology and used the services of Myles. When he retired, we brought in a new ophthalmologist, Dr. Caitlin Nolan. And Dr. Nolan got very busy very quickly, as Dr. Seibel was. So we were very fortunate to just very recently have added a second ophthalmologist. Her name is Dr. Meredith Marsinson. And now we have two ophthalmologists practicing in the building right next to the hospital. We've moved them from their Newcastle location, Main Street Newcastle, to the hospital campus. So the new building not only has given our existing medical staff a lot better space, nicer space, more modern space, but it's given us space to bring in new services. And this is not all. We're working on others as we speak. But this is important to us going forward as an organization. One thing, another thing I would like to mention is, and Julie just reminded me of how big into teaching we are as an organization. We teach all kinds of students, clinical as well as non-clinical students, nursing students, medical students, respiratory therapy students, the list goes on. There are literally hundreds and hundreds of students we teach during the course of the year. Part of that is an effort to grow our own, because as you know, there's these workforce shortages out there hit healthcare very hard, and the baby boomer generation has not quite run its course yet. So we are struggling every day to fill positions, and you name it. From doctors and nurses to accountants to plumbers, there's a shortage. And it's not getting better anytime soon. So our goal in, through our teaching programs, whatever they might be, is to grow our own, to give these young people experience in Lincoln County, and experience in small-town medicine, small-town hospitals setting or nursing home setting. We do this through our partnership with Central Maine Community College and the nursing program, which is now in about its 15th year in Damascata. Still the only college degree granting program in the county. We grow our own nursing assistants, CNAs rather. Two, I think we're up to two classes a year now, and we need more. We'd like to do more. CNAs are the backbone of our senior living services as well as the hospital inpatient services. We help train medical students in concert with the Tufts Main Medical Center Medical School Program. We have two third-year students for nine months staying with us, being trained by our doctors. And this is a very important effort across, really across the country right now, but we know what our little corner looks like. And that is to expose medical students relatively early in their clinical careers to what it's like to practice in small towns and rural, and rural spaces. And this is now, we have, two students are with us now, they'll be finishing up in May. The new students, we already have the names of the students will be joining us in June, and they will be the ninth pair. So this will be our ninth year, starting in June, of training medical students through the Tufts Main Medical Center Program. All of this is important not just to Lincoln Health, because these students not all won't necessarily end up back working for us, but by exposing them to our community, to Lincoln County, to Maine, to what Maine has to offer, we hope to get them back and keep them. Just to finish up, I'm running a little longer, and I expect that, I apologize for that. I've used the term that Lincoln Health is a small door into a big system. And there's a picture of a gentleman in here who had a cardiac issue and ended up in our emergency department. And before he knew it, he was in the cardiac cath lab at Main Medical Center. We have one of the most well-developed systems across the state of Maine to take care of cardiac patients and get them to definitive care as quickly as possible. In that case, that definitive care is provided at Main Medical Center. It would be provided at Eastern Maine Medical Center, Central Maine Medical Center, and Maine General as well. But large, most patients go to Main Medical Center, Main has the largest capacity. And that's just one example, cardiac services. But when somebody comes to one of our providers, they're going to get the care they need where they need it, whether it's in Damascata, whether it's in Portland, whether it's in Boston, whether it's someplace else. That's, that's what we do with a, with a small, small community. There's some numbers in here that I will leave you to read. I'm not going to go over them with you. Just, I did want to point out though, because one of the things we did not do the last time around was talk specifically about the towns when we come to visit. So according to our records, we have 96 of those 1,000 employees have a Walderboro residence right now. And as the economists, economists do their job, that those 96 jobs create 38 indirect jobs. And I'm not an economist, I don't know how that works really, but. And also, according to our records, we took care of just under 3,000 patients last year who live in Walderboro. And of those, 155 received free care and at the total of just under $430,000. And that's our cost, that's not our price, that's our cost. And that free care could have come from Care Partners, which you may have heard of, which is a free care program that's been around in Lincoln County for probably close to 15 years now. Or there's other programs as well. But we work very hard to make sure people access the care they need and access the services, whether it's through Care Partners or through, through the Medicaid program as well. And the last thing I want, I'm going to leave you with is just the, this page entitled Strategic Priorities. This is, this is how we, how our thinking is formed in 2020. This is what we're focused on in many, many different ways. I've already talked about workforce engagement and what that means to us. We're all about excellence. That's what our communities, that's what our patients deserve. Talking to our communities, this is one example of that. We also are starting a community committee here with the great help from Julie, and we really appreciate it, because we want to be able to not only reach out to our communities, but have our communities reach in to us. It's outreach and in-reach, if you will. Quality, cost, and value, that's, that's our job. And always looking at redesigning how we, how we deliver our services to make sure they're the most effective, efficient, and highest quality. The planning committee I talked about earlier to think about the future of the primary care practices in Walderboro is a good example of that. And the last one I'll mention, population health. That's the way we're being paid now on an increasing basis. That's a fixed payment for a fixed group of people. So we might be getting paid for the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 of you, $500 a month to take care of all your needs, and the risk is on us. It's, we're assuming insurance risk. So we, right now, across the entire main health system, we have about 250,000 patients who are under some kind of risk contract that we are assuming. So that's 250,000 out of 1.3 million. That's a pretty good chunk. And that's been growing over the years. We're going to see more of that. We're doing that with all the payers, Medicare, Anthem, even Medicaid is starting to wade into that a little bit. But that term "population health" is really code for fixed payment for a group of people with the healthcare provider taking, taking the insurance risk, if you will, for that. We've been in this game for quite a long time, but the numbers of patients are growing every year. And we have to get better at keeping people healthy. That's, that's the risk that we're trying to mitigate, is keeping people healthy. And we're still learning. Every year, we learn through all these contracts. It's kind of a bit of a learning laboratory, but that's, that's the direction in the future of healthcare, healthcare is going across the state. So I'm going to end there and answer any questions anybody might have. Anybody, except Ruben can't answer any questions. Ruben can't.
I have a statement.
I can never answer it.
I don't have any questions, but I do have to tell you something, because I have you captive.
Yes, ma'am.
Over the last year, I've been working with Lincoln Health a lot. And your team, Cindy, Stacy, okay, I'll throw Ruben in there, John.
No, you better.
But, you know, Marva, I met Marva at a community meeting. It's, it's an incredible team you have.
Thank you.
And that's, that's, it's special when you can, can, can work with that. And from my standpoint, because I know sometimes we haven't always been the most friendly place to work with, we're not real reaching out in the past with you. We've really tried to change that culture, but it's been made so easy by your incredible staff. And, and you need to understand, they're phenomenal, just from my position here and working with them. Also, as a patient, great service. Gail in physical therapy is an amazing person.
I'll amend that too. This, this shoulder knows that.
But it's just such a pleasure, you know. I sat on a conference call the other day with six people who I wasn't, you know, I had never, some of them I had never met, but it was the first time I talked to them. You're Director of Development and all kinds of fun things that we were doing. And the response was just wonderful, and it's, it's been an absolute pleasure.
Thank you so much for saying that.
So I just, I wanted to be able to tell you that personally.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. It is a great team, and they, they really live to, to take care of our community. And I appreciate that. So thank you. And we do, we enjoy working with all of them.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, on the oncology department you just set up. Is there any future thought being given to oncology massage?
I don't know what that is.
Well, Donny School of Massage in Walderboro is involved in that, and it's a nationally recognized program for cancer patients. It may be worth looking at. It's complimentary to the, obviously, the medical side.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a holistic element that you bring to the treatment. And I was also going to ask about T-cell research and whether or not that at some point might play a role in the chemotherapy treatments that you're going to be offering people.
Again, I, you just, that one. I will tell you that the, the great thing about chemotherapy these days is the, no matter where you're providing it, you have access to the same treatment protocols and if necessary, experimental treatment protocols as you would get in Portland, Boston, New York. We'll, we'll have those same protocols available here. Yeah, that, it's, it's, it is impressive. And Dr. Mills is, if you had asked him that question, we probably, he probably would have had a 25-minute explanation. But he's, he's, 30 years of experience. If he were here, the first thing he would tell you, he said he, he moved to Maine and he flunked retirement. So he came to Maine to retire. He lives in Newcastle. And now he's working again, which is, you know, I've, we've probably all known people who've flunked retirement also, right? Maybe some of you have. But he is, he is as up to date and Monica is as well. And they're working within, you may have seen things in the paper, what's called the Main Health Cancer Care Network. And they're part of that. So we have the network that includes all the main health organizations, kind of with the main medical center in the center of it, if you will. And the treatments and services that they offer are second to none. You can't do any better. Like a lot of things we do, they, nobody does everything. So there are probably reasons for somebody to go to Boston from time to time, or Dana Harbor if they choose, those kind of places. But the Main Health Cancer Care Network is truly remarkable, and we're proud to be a part of that for our communities.
Thank you. Ma'am, back.
Bob, the main health system cooperates with the Dempsey Center. And they have a South Portland location and a location in Lewiston where they do offer cancer massage. That's targeted to, let's get to picture.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I was just a little curious now, but it sounds like you're pretty well rebuilding consolidated services and expanding on campus. What the thinking is about more dispersed services, for example, local clinics, pediatrics, maybe palliative care, things like that, in towns like Walderboro or Jefferson or something like that? I know for years it's been talked about, but not, you've been focusing on other things. And I wonder how the future is for you in that respect.
Well, our, our core and the true strength of Lincoln Health is our primary care practices. And as I mentioned, where they are, and they're all, they take care of the whole family. So we have had pediatricians, for example, spend time in Walderboro. But there's family physicians in Walderboro, and they take care of the whole family, just like West Cassett or Boothby Harbor. We have, we are probably not going to be expanding our practices geographically beyond the current locations. So you mentioned Jefferson, for example. And it's, it's a matter of scale. You have to have enough scale, enough patients coming in order to make it, in order to be able to keep providers there, in order to be able to hire doctors and nurse practitioners and nurses. And in communities, well, our Walderboro practice is, is our busiest practice within the ones I mentioned. And that's because Walderboro is the most populous town in Lincoln County, and you know all that better than I do. And they're very busy, which is the reason we're talking about planning for the future and looking at new space and more space, et cetera. But we really have to have enough volume in one place to make it worthwhile. And having people go out for, we've talked about it for a day a week. Jefferson or New Harbor is one that's come up too. It just, it just doesn't make sense for the most, you know, appropriate use of that, of a precious resource, which is a doctor's time.
Does that imply that we might see a facility, why the Walderboro facility grow and be more invested in as a regional offshoot of the main campus?
It does. It does. That's, that's pretty much what we're talking about is, since the Coastal Healthcare Alliance Practice and Lincoln Health, Lincoln Medical Partners Practice are working much more closely together now, you know, we need to look at them as a, as a, as a unit and then look at other services that I know are on the table to build out a more, I call it a campus? Is that the term that's been used?
The campus, yeah. That's the campus concept.
Yeah, healthcare campus that can bring new services that are not just, you know, not just physician services, but services that can promote health and wellness as well. So we're looking at that, as I said, that's the planning committee I mentioned earlier that's been in place now for several months, looking at how we might better serve, you know, the community down the road.
And we are excited to partner with you.
Yeah. Thank, thank you.
It's huge.
For us too.
Just like say a hats off to Dr. Moran.
Yes. Oh, yes.
Five hours back surgery I had, very professional. I think it's the first time I've ever had a doctor call me at home at 8:00 at night, see how I was doing. Just amazing. Yeah, wicked.
You're not a fisherman, are you?
Yeah.
So that's why he called you at home. He wanted to talk fishing, didn't he?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. No, yeah, Dr. Moran is, he's, he's an old-school guy.
Yeah.
And I'm not surprised that he's calling at 8:00 at night to check in, because he's. he's probably still in his scrubs at the hospital at eight o'clock at night.
Yeah.
With dinner on the table at home. He's a, he's a good guy and you were, you were in very good hands.
One thing I didn't see on here was like a foot doctor.
Yeah, we have podiatrists.
You do?
Yep. Yep, yep. They're, they're in private practice, they come and they take care of patients, they use our ORs.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much for your time. I know you're very busy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd like to.
Thank you.
Next up is Jean Lawrence of the Historical Society. Jean has a protocol recommendation to make to us tonight.
Well, it's nice to be with you again. I'm here tonight to attempt to clarify an imprecise article of recent select board meeting, which appeared in print regarding some thoughts that were really not correctly presented to you. The subject has to do with the content of two pages in the town report. Now, it's wonderful to have people who go before you who use the same vocabulary that you're going to use. So your vocabulary tonight is protocol, okay? In institutions and organizations designed to continue service over long periods of time, protocols or processes are developed to assure that the programs and the services continue despite change in leadership and structure. This assures a quality product, whether it is a tool, whether it is care, such as you've just heard about, or whether it's a publication. Awareness of such protocols plus good communication by all involved in creating the product is imperative. Therefore, the process steps are usually written down, promoted, and made available throughout the whole organization. While the two changes that I am presenting are the result of discussions that Bill Maxwell, the vice president of the Waldenboro Historical Society, and I have had over the past year, at the time, we were in no way looking for more work to do for the society. We have more than enough to keep us busy. We were discussing the format of a valuable historical document that you create and are responsible for. However, after a recent discussion with Chair Bob Buffalo, I've tried to nail down the proposal which I'm bringing to you tonight. And I'm also committing to support it on behalf of the Waldenboro Historical Society. Now, I taught school long enough to know that you don't hand out the papers until after it's over, okay? So I'll talk about two pages. The first page is the dedication page that has always been a part of the town report. In general, town reports are considered primary sources for historical research. And they are used not only for research, but also for educational purposes. So your town report is important, okay? Therefore, Waldenboro's town reports are not only important for their current information, that's why everybody wants a copy of the report when they go to vote, but also for the record of history which they represent. Now, on the, on the town report dedication recognition page, we are suggesting, first of all, what is it for? The page we utilize to recognize specific contributions that a living person or persons, organization, or entity has made to the town of Waldenboro. It will consist of an overview of the nominee's life and contributions and if possible, will be accompanied by a photo. So the only change is, we are proposing that the recognition page, that is the dedication page, be to a living person or entity. Okay, now you can still dedicate it to the river because the river is still living, okay? You can still dedicate it to any person who is still living. Actually, annually, Waldenboro citizens would be encouraged to make nominations for the dedication utilizing a form which has already been posted on the town website. And we would also suggest that paper copies of that form also be available in the town office. Nominations should be confidential and should be made by using the form, completing it, and mailing it to the town office, bringing it into the town office, or mailing it to the Waldenboro Historical Society. The call for nominations will be made by newspapers, local social media sites, and the town website. And I'm suggesting that it start the second week in January and accompanying the call would be a timeline for the deadline. All nominations would be reviewed by the Historical Society and confidential recommendations would then be made to the town select board and you would make the final decision based on whatever is recommended to you. The decision or the dedication would have to be still written by an individual who is familiar with the nominee or is willing to research the subject, has competent writing experience, and can meet deadlines. That's really important because sometimes the muse doesn't get on certain people when you want it to. And the writer would be appointed by the select board. So that's what is being proposed as a protocol written down for the dedication page of the report. Secondly, we are suggesting that there be a second page called the Town Report Memorial Recognition Page. And this page would contain the name or names, because it could be more than one, of local individuals who have deceased during the year and who have been leaders in the community. A descriptive paragraph plus a photo, if it's available, would be created for each person. Community members could then also make nominations for that page as well, using the same format that I already discussed. If only one, or if hopefully, there were no memorial nominations of anyone who had passed away during the year, then hopefully, the Waldenboro Historical Society could create recognition paragraphs of one or more past leaders or contributors to the development of Waldenboro who were never recognized with a report dedication. And that will be easy to do because on your website, you've got a list of all the people who have had a report dedicated to them. But we also have a long list of people who have made huge contributions to this town and have never been recognized through any kind of a dedication or a memorial. And if possible, we would also include a photo with a brief written paragraph about the individuals and you could have a couple on a page, two or three. The format of the page would be organized, we're taking the responsibility for that, by the Waldenboro Historical Society, which would then submit it to the select board for your approval and for publication in the report. Now, that's basically what, and I'll give those to you and you can all have one. That's basically what we were hoping to be able to explain to you and that would be the two changes that we would suggest might be made. Now, I've lived in Waldenboro for 50 years and for quite a number of years, I've known that someone is always selected to be the leader of the Waldenboro Parade, okay? And for all the years that I've looked there, I never knew how that came about. Where did it come from? Who wrote down how that's done? And it wasn't until recently that I realized. I think there are a lot of people that don't know how the dedication page comes about. And I think the people in our town, and Bill joins me in this, believe that while people are alive, they should be recognized if they've done good things. Like my grandmother used to say to me, "Don't bring my flowers when I'm dead. Bring them to me when I'm alive." And so this is a presentation that, that I'm making to you. I don't know that necessarily you want to vote on it at this time, but if you have any questions, I would, I would be happy to try to answer them.
Did you want to insert the amended spot under dedication, one, two, three, four? The fifth dot down, the writer will be appointed by the select board with the recommendation of the Historical Society.
How do you feel about that, Jean?
We certainly can recommend, but I'm not going to live forever. So that's why we're having a protocol, because you have to have somebody else that can write and do it. And I think the Historical Society certainly could recommend something, but I wouldn't want, I would want that to be your decision as to who does the writing. Because there are sometimes people that are better to do certain jobs.
Used to have Steve Catrake do a lot of them.
Well, he used to do a lot of them, but he...
No, he's gone.
He has an allegiance over the other way now.
Yeah, I know.
Jean's done a lot of them.
I've done, I've done a lot of the recent ones. But that is a job that takes a lot of time. You don't just, especially if you don't know the person, I can have to do the research. That, that takes time. But I think that should be yours. If you want to add that line that Bob put in there this morning when I woke up and found it, that's okay with me, but I think you should, we'll recommend, but I think it's your job. We don't, we don't mean to take any, any jobs away from you, but yet we're willing to support this portion of the town report because it's history. And history is very, very important. And this town is filled with wonderful history.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your work. This, I just got wind of this today. First, I've, I've learned of it, so I haven't, I've had only a short time, because I had to work, to think about it and no real time to ponder. But I did have some questions. I wondered about the, first, I like the, the addition of the memorial and that does seem like an appropriate Historical Society addition. Did you do, do you, can you share with us the history of how the dedication has been done? I know in the past six years, I've, I've been a part of it, but is there some history on that?
No, not that we have, anyway. I just have received a telephone call and somebody said, "The town has selected," this is a secret, "The town has selected so-and-so, would you please write the page?"
Right, we've been, we've all, I think, been involved in the selection.
I don't know that anybody knows. I, I don't know that townspeople have been asked.
Well, I think they've been, they've given, they have been given, they've given names to...
They might have given, but I don't think...
They've given names to select board members and the office.
I don't think anybody has put a call out.
No, I don't think so. I think until this year, I think Julie was the first to, to put that out.
And the only reason we did...
And we discussed that, yeah.
Was because we discussed it.
Right, as a board, we, we discussed that and thought that was a good idea.
Right.
But I think a follow-up paragraph needs to appear and, well, it will now because I'm here.
There you go.
But I think every, every year, I think a follow-up paragraph or notice should have appeared in the paper that it is on the town report now, not on the town report, on the town site now, and that they can go in and...
So just adding the technology?
Oh, I think adding the technology and putting it on all the, all the sites, your media sites, town, all of them.
Well, with, yes, yes, with the new, with bringing in the public.
Getting the word out.
Oh, yeah.
Because when that came out, the reason I got involved in this, well, for a lot of reasons, but never mind this one, is when it came out in the newspaper, I got the calls. Where's the form? How do I do this? And because it said...
That should have come to us.
Because it's, because it said Waldenboro Historical Society in the, in the original...
I didn't read the, I was only a part of the conversation at the table here.
That's okay.
But I, I didn't have, I didn't read the article.
That's okay.
Sorry. So that, so are you saying that the Historical Society wants to take the choice of dedication away from the town?
No, no. We're, we're just a place you send, send the forms to and, and as well as the town. And we will try to give you some information based on what the people have written on the forms and everything and just make recommendations to you. Not going to take anything away from you.
But in the past, those, the recommendations and the write-ups came to the town and we discussed them.
There were no write-ups unless people just decided they wanted to talk to somebody.
We had, no, not the write-up afterwards, before the decision was made.
Before, there was no form.
No, there wasn't a form, but people sent in the information.
But they can do that and you can send.
And then we, then we discussed that.
Yeah, but as an individual, if you decide, not as a, not as a select person, but you have somebody that you really think should be brought to the attention and you want to fill out the form, so there will be information on it.
Yeah, oh, no, that's fine. I'm just curious why it's going to the Historical Society instead of the town?
Because Bob asked us if that would be a, a good way for us to give him, to give you more information on people. For instance, if you, not everybody, as, as I mentioned in the beginning, as time goes on, people are, the same people aren't always on this board. The same town manager is not here all the time. I have, we had a talk on Sunday and I, Bill and I sat and mentioned names and Bob went, "Who was that? I don't know, I don't know." J. Malcolm Bader was one.
Yep.
And he, and he said, "I don't know J. Malcolm Bader." Well, he's long gone now, but he was a mover and a shaker in the town at one time. So he was suggesting that from the standpoint of all of the files and the genealogy stuff that we have, that we might be able to help, but we don't have to do it.
So it wasn't a board, it wasn't a board thing?
No, no. Not a board.
Okay, that, well, that was, that was just a, I, not, it was a surprise. It was a surprise to me that...
It just, you know, you got, you've got people, you've got material available.
Mm-hmm, we do.
For instance, there's a person that was never recognized in this town, Dr. Carl Bythe. Now, a lot of people know that Dr. Bythe was a wonderful dentist, but they have no idea all of the things that he did, especially for children in this town. And, and also all of the organizations that he belonged to that supported activities within the town. Well, he died young, that's true, but he was no, that's just one. I mean, I've got, just that you've got pages.
Yeah, and that's where the town memorial...
The memorial page would be really important.
That's where I can see that the Historical Society would work on that because that's history, but if we're talking about present day, then I would feel a little uncomfortable.
This is just a proposal, we've got plenty of time to change it.
Yeah, yeah, because every, there's change everywhere.
Do you agree that it should be a living person in the dedication?
I haven't really had a chance to think about that. I haven't really had a chance to think about that. I have to think and ponder those things.
Okay.
I think sometimes circumstances, and we've had in the past circumstances where a person has died during the year when, when we have dedicated it to that person. So, they lived for some of that year, but not all of that.
But they weren't alive when it was presented.
They weren't alive when it was presented. It would-
And they would still be recognized, because they would be on the memorial page.
Right. So, I think that's a, I think that's a good idea, and that would be something that's really, would be consistent and, I, I'm not so sure about-
Well, it's something that they-
Yeah. Yes, because, I mean, there's change in Historical Society as well as any other group. But I, somehow, I, when I first, my inclination, when I first read it, I said, "Oh, there's a good idea, that memorial." And the other was, I think on the present day, I think the elected officials would, would be the ones to do the, the dedication, as opposed to the memorial on that. That was my first. I haven't had a chance to ponder it.
You still are going to do it.
Well, as a-
You're doing it.
Right. As the initial people who, who take care of it.
So, I guess, okay.
And maybe, I haven't had a chance, you know, this is a-
And think about it.
This is the first day, so I have to think of, read it again, ponder it, and, and think to see how that would change what we've done in the past.
I, I would add, Mrs. Lawrence, that a few years back, some of us who was on board, we, we'd done the person alive and one that passed in the same report. I don't know what years it was, but-
Yeah, and last year, there were, there was an extra person that was put in there, too.
So, we talked about that. We had that discussion years ago.
Yeah, we, we do, we do have meetings and discuss.
Oh, I'm not saying you don't, dear.
Yeah.
Okay? Any other questions?
Thank you.
We'll get this on the agenda for discussion at the next meeting.
Thank you for all the work, Jean.
Thank you too, Bill.
Thank you.
Adjustment to the agenda, and there's only one, and that is we need to put off personnel policy discussion until the February 11th meeting, because Paige has, needs some time to look it over. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Okay. That was item 5.1. Citizen comments? Select board comments?
Just, just going through the packet. Was we supposed to do anything with the, the survey on, or no?
Max is going to-
Okay, okay.
Check it on it. Talk about it on 10.1.
Gotcha.
Any other select board comments?
Yes. Did you?
Nope, I'm good, I'm good. Thanks.
Well, first of all, I'd like to just say congratulations to Julie, who has a three new grandson.
I do.
Didn't get to see the pictures today, but I will soon. Some more, said the Facebook one, so congratulations there.
Lincoln George, very presidential. Big things are expected.
And the other thing, I mentioned last week about a, one of our school students who won the VFW Patriots Pan Award for the state, for the school, for the local, and for the state, and will compete against students across the country soon. So, I did go to Lorraine Knight, who is the teacher at Midomic Middle School, who runs the Patriots Pan Project. That's through VFW. They do middle school as well as high school competitions. And she is going to get a packet of the actual letter, I mean, the essay that the young lady wrote, and the packet of information about what the Patriots Pan is, because I told her that our Memorial Day Committee might be interested in looking at it, and, so she, she has agreed to do that. She is also the woman, she teaches reading and social studies, who puts on the Veterans' Day program at the Midomic Middle School, and she's done that for many, many years. If you haven't had an opportunity to sit through one of those, you're missing something. So, during Veterans', during, it's prior to Veterans' Day, make sure that you get that date and get over there. It's open to the public. It's really, she does a wonderful job. She's done it every year. The school is talking about doing it every other year. But I think she would like to do it every year, just, and she's looking for some ideas to change it up, but still have, she has veterans on stage, and the, either a relative, a student who's a relative, or the student will give the, read a bio about that person. And then they do the flag ceremony and, and explain how the folding of the flag, and all different things in there.
I remember it, Adie Gray.
It's, she's, it's been going on for years, and it's, it's well-attended, and it's well worth it. It's really quite, it, it's quite a moving meeting. So, anyway, so I'll get that packet, and, and so we'll have a copy of those, so.
I don't have anything but, well, actually, I do have one thing to add to my town manager report. Last week, we got the best news, and it involves Maximilian Worth a Billion, although now it's only $116,000 hairs. But Max was successful in making John Deggel happy, which in itself was a monumental task. But, we received $116,000 grant to replace one of our trucks through the VW Settlement Fund, so I just want to say thank you to Max. He does an excellent job. And aside from being our audiovisual person now, I guess, you know, he also, he moonlights as a grant writer, but that's like really important. It does save us a lot of money, and just a really good job. So, Maximilian Worth $116,000. I really like Worth a Billion, but I'm going to go with this.
Well, it'll be cumulative.
It'll be, yeah, we're going to be cumulative. And I should also point out, I will point this out at the budget meetings, but Max has paid for himself several times over with his grant funding that he's received, which is good.
Thank you, Max.
He's joined an elite group. There's now two of us in that group, so we're good.
Thank you, Julie. Consent calendar, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent calendar? Okay, we'll vote. All in favor? New business, sorry, new business, John Degg. Quarterly Report on Transfer Station and Public Works.
He is the first guinea pig, technically. You can tell.
That wasn't the plan.
We just thought you might want to give us an update on how the winter's going.
Not too bad. Winter's been pretty much average. We haven't had quite as much snow as we usually have right now. We're around 27 inches right around this area. We've had a lot of rain. Temperatures have been fluctuating a lot, warmer than usual. We've had a few cold storms. People have been complaining the roads out there. It's just some other cars. When it's real cold, the roads aren't really slippery. People drive normal. Salt at 30, 28 degrees, one pound melts 40 pounds of snow. As you turn around, drop down 25 to 23 degrees, it's half of that. And if you go any colder, if, if the roads are slippery, it's been my call, and I don't put anything down. Travel is good. We usually don't have any accidents. I have received complaints, why is Damascada bare? They're a town of 24 miles, and he's going through 14, 1600 tons of salt.
Just so you know, not all roads in Damascada are bare.
Yeah.
The main road might be bare, but I can tell you, I pull out on my road, and it's not bare.
You know, salt is brought in to the state. DOT, they pollute at least 10 to 20 wells a year. The salt we use, the amount we need, I don't use an excessive amount. You can tell, the reason being, on most of my roads, the shoulders are melted. A lot of the roads, the shoulders are melted. So, we use the amount of salt that's provided to us. We use it when we need to. This year, the way winter's been, if you use a fair amount, we're a little over half to our full year, which isn't bad at all. Gone through a lot of catnages, trying to slash off roads. We tried the carbides. I had tried them 25, 30 years ago. Wasn't impressive. DOT, and some other towns around told me I'd save money with them. I proved them wrong again. So, we will be going back to regular catnages. Carbides costing us per plow is $1,000. I can buy six sets of the regular blades for 900, and they go me a full season. So, and carbides only going a half, so contrary to what people say. This winter, we had problems with our daughter's hand shed. It's a 20 by 20 foot to walk. We went to open it, there was storm to get sand. Cable busted, busted the springs. The door came down. I had to get in the building. So, it was racked. We had to get sand. I made a decision, open it up with a loader. So, now it's going to be an insurance claim, which I'm not going to bother with right at this moment, because it's going to take them quite a while to put it back out. My new truck, we're getting 550. I'll pick it up tomorrow. It's all done. And then we have one more to go up, get set up.
That's for the wing and the plow.
That's power wing. Get the sand done. That has helped tremendously this year with upgrading trucks, newer trucks. But it's funny, we had, the other morning, Bob showed up. We had two of the older trucks. We just went up and sanded with them, and had to come back in the shop, which, that's something we're going to have to talk about, keeping this quiet and too long. That's pretty much it. We're cutting bushes, patching potholes. You guys will get a call on backhoe, because we're cutting bushes. That's as far as the highway.
Can you just give me just, one of the things? So, I love coming in on a snow day, because I get to answer the phone. Can you just explain how come you're not up and down the same road five times in five hours?
It's surprising.
Because everybody seems to think that if the storm is going, and they saw you at 8:00, you should be back by 10:00.
It's surprising. On a lot of the roads, some routes 14 miles long, that's one way. I have some that are 16 miles long. By the time you go, you're doing about 20 miles an hour, go one way, turn around, come back. You know, that's further than going to Rockland at 20 miles an hour. And then, of course, you've got to jump on another road and do them. It all takes time. People complain now, they say we're speeding. It's not that we're speeding.
And if you have to put down any salt and sand, and you run out, you have to go back and get more salt.
Yes. When we get called to go out plowing and sanding, by the time gear floats, everybody have to go, it's almost 45 minutes an hour loading all the trucks. Trucks go out, they put their load out. Most routes take three to four truckloads. And they usually, on their return, takes an hour. So, you're talking pretty much three to four hours when they call us to do some sanding. We do the main routes first, and then the side roads, and then the dirt roads. Dirt roads, we leave the last. The reason being is we're running salt-sand mix on the tired roads, and the dirt roads, we can't do that. If we did that, there'd be mud all along, it'd pull frost out. So, a lot of people don't understand that. The state's running two, three trucks here. They're doing five miles on 32, five miles on 1. People see that. We can't compare with that. A lot of your bigger cities and towns, I turn around, they have a truck for every six miles, five to six miles a road. Just think what, just think what size garage we have. So, it's, it's the same old thing.
Thank you. I just, it's, it's just great to hear it in that way. People out there might listen to it.
And you might get a story out of that, and it might appear in the paper and some more.
My road's been good. How about your road, Ashton?
Been all right.
Yeah?
Now, for the transfer station. Now, Julie has been involved with this, even though she didn't save an account manager report. And the latest update was, which I met with the engineer again today. May 1st, will be closing of Landville of this year. The information permitting and everything else is going to be turned in this week for the closure. They surveyed it. I did make a mistake. I have it's two feet above, so we have to cut two feet off. I wanted to make sure it was full before we capped it. And I did, because we was able, with the engineer there, able to find a place where I can put that material. So, works out well.
You won't have to haul it off, then?
Won't have to haul it off, so.
It's just grading.
Just grade, that's it. So, of course, turning that stuff into EP, you know, I imagine, senior engineer and DEP, trying to go back and forth. The engineer, Rob Pro, which I've known for quite a few years, he asked me if I was going to do the grading of it. And he knew I was going to say yes. And he, he said it would save the town a lot of money if we turn around and do the finished grades and the slope ourselves, and put the other stuff up to bid. So, that's what my plan is. I haven't talked to Julie, because I haven't had time to see her today.
That's okay.
But I guess I would want to take on that task.
You're going to have someone help you get the elevations right when you grade it down?
No, I'll do it.
You got it? Okay.
The, where?
Just ask them.
Well, the, the problem, there's a ledge.
You had to ask him that, now you could.
There's a ledge 400 feet away where I was taking my elevation reading from. They have a plan, and of course, the ledge changes, and you can see a little speck of orange paint still left on that, but it was on a different side. But anyways, there was also another spot for an elevation reading, which I didn't know about, was top of the monitoring well. And that's right on, so that's why I had a problem. It's not a big deal.
It's two feet.
Two feet.
Close enough for-
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So, that's the biggest thing for the transfer station. But once we start home, interior law, people will start paying by pound. And we should have a meeting.
And we've got one scheduled for February 4th.
Yeah, yeah. Start.
3:00.
Talking about the charges.
Yep.
And we'll go on with that. That's basically all I have.
Thank you so much, Tom.
And I think we have Max up next. Talk about the transportation survey?
Yes. So, we won, so just a quick bit of background. Last fall, I applied for an Ask Grant from the Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission. This is the same grant program that we applied for that allowed us to do the community center survey that Marcus, our migration director, took on, and they were, to get some very positive feedback. Lincoln County had a bonus round this past year, and we're very vocal of, we really want to get some more towns to apply to this, we want to see if anyone has any interest. And for those who don't know what this program is, it's more of seed money for planning projects. This isn't any mortar or any building type thing, this is just planning. So, I, public transportation is something that I've always been very interested in, and so I wanted to conduct, and I believe in the midcoast area, there hasn't been that many studies done. I know there was one in 2014, but that was for Thomason and Camden, well, no, not even Thomason, I think it was just Camden, Rockport, Rockland. So, I was intrigued with Waldboro being the largest one in Lincoln County, right on the, the edge of Lincoln County and Knox, if there is, if it's possible. So, the survey that all of you got ahead of time is the draft I would like to submit to you for your approval, to then, similar to how it was done with the community center, send out to each resident in Waldboro and have them respond to it. As I say, this is fully funded by the Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission, and this is not committing us to anything, this is more of a data-focused survey, just to see if people, where the interests are for going out of town.
So, I have one question for you.
Yes.
Is this something that, because I, I would imagine people who are in most need of public transportation may not be the ones who fill out the survey.
Right.
So, is it possible that there is a way we could have like small meetings where you could explain what's going on, and people could fill out the survey in person?
I was planning on doing this in two different sections. The first was the survey, just to get an idea of what people are thinking, and depending on the feedback, I would then present the results to the Select Board, and if you were fine with the results, I would then follow it up with some public forums for people you were mentioning, because I also know there's employers and people who don't own certain properties in town, or some employees who come from either Damascata or Knox County who won't be able to fill this survey out either, and I want to get their feedback as well.
I would, I would add to what Julie's suggesting, though, there are, I think it's a good idea to get groups together in certain buildings in town, for example, and to present the survey to them and ask them to fill it out.
Like the sprawl block would be an excellent place to have.
Yeah, and the village over here on Main Street.
And collect them.
Because if you don't do that, you're not going to get the answers, you're not going to get the responses you need in order to help us decide whether to do anything else. Your, your data's going to be skewed, because it's not enough people will have responded.
Well, the subdivisions, I was planning to do a separate thing. I was, I needed to talk to Marcus. Marcus said that he talked to someone from the post office, and that's how he got his mailing list. I just needed to see that first and see, well, how is it done with the sprawl block? How's it done with the mobile home parks? How's it done with any subdivisions?
So, this will go out to everyone? Would that be the plan?
If you are fine with the language, yes.
I think it's excellent.
Again, this is just getting some data, I'm not trying to get anything done this year. I know Julie's been working hard on the budget, and I don't want to.
It's okay.
Get a vein popping or anything.
You're not going to get a vein popping.
What am I now?
I can't fund a bus route yet.
Yes, and I know you put by, just by the EDC, didn't you, because I'm like, you know, the committee to look at it.
Yes, the last time they looked at it, they just asked that it be more of a check, I'm trying to think of what the format, style is, but just more check marks rather than straight sections, yep, so I applied that to this.
We need a motion on that.
Yes, sir.
I would move that.
I'll second it. Any further discussion on the survey? All in favor? Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
Max, thank you for your reports that you send out to us, they're very helpful.
No problem.
It's good to keep us.
Old Business is next, tax-acquired property policy.
If you will recall, the last meeting, we had the policy in front of us, and what came out of that is Rose can come to a, a meeting in the future to explain some of the bigger changes, but for her sale this time, we have to remove that 30-day notice and just take that out to be able to comply, so that she can send out the notices at the end of this week. So, if you could just approve that removal of that 30-day, were, those two words, 30-day, then she can proceed with the sale, because then the policy would be corrected.
Okay.
So, nobody has an issue with that.
Is there a motion?
That's some move.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
And some of the other changes that were proposed, apparently the legislature is rethinking, so, but that is the one little part that just needed to be fixed, so.
Thank you.
Easy fix.
Okay. So, the personnel policy will be next meeting on February 11th. Agenda items for the next meeting, I have a number, and I'll go through them very quickly. We're going to have to have an executive session on the main water contract draft. We're going to want to talk about advertising for openings on a new Water Department Advisory Committee. We're going to have a special session in EMS to recognize some folks. Hopefully, we'll have the personnel policy discussion, a report from the Police Department, and a further discussion of the town report protocol that Jean presented tonight. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that? Okay, we're set for the next meeting. We have two executive sessions, and I'm hoping we can get through them, because Ruben is here tonight, and I really want him to be in on the second one.
Okay.
So, is there a motion to move into executive session under 4056F?
Oh, yeah.
Take a motion to convene an executive.
May I withdraw that? Sorry, may I withdraw that for a second? Could we do the executive session on the franchise first?
You can.
That way, Ruben can get home and will know how long, I don't think that's going to take Mr. Long.
No, no. Ruben, can you stay? We're going to put off the Philbrook, so you can go ahead.
Yeah, I can, yeah, I didn't.
Okay, so, I guess, the motion is to go into executive session pursuant to one MRSA 40, section 4056C, to discuss the charter franchise agreement.
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, we're in executive session. Motion to come out of executive session.
So, you will go back in for Daryl?
Second.
Second.
Is there a motion to go back into executive session pursuant to 405?
6F, as Philbrook Fund trustees discuss the following applications.
Some more.
Second.
All in favor?
Make a motion tomorrow?
A second.
All in favor? Thank you. All right.
Can you pass that down and sign?
All right, so.
No.
Is there a motion on 2020-8?
Usually go backwards.
Deny.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Motion on 2020-12.
Deny.
Second.
All in favor? 2020-13.
Deny.
Second.
All in favor? 2020-14.
Deny.
Second.
All in favor? 2020-15.
Deny.
All in favor? Is there a second? Sorry. Yeah, all in favor? And 2020-16.
Deny.
Second.
All in favor? Is there a motion, a motion to adjourn?
Some more.
Second.
All in favor?